Jeremy, we good? Okay, we're going to call the regular meeting to order here for February 25th. If I could get everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we want to welcome everybody to our regular meeting here for February. Those of you who are in the room, thank you for attending, and those of you who are watching online or who might watch in the days to come, thank you for staying involved with our school district. We appreciate it. 1.04 is the adoption of our agenda. If we could get a motion on our agenda, please.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a double second for the adoption of the agenda. So are there any questions or comments on the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of adopting the agenda, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. A couple of quick notes for a lot of people who are watching out there. We did have a few technical issues with the work session. Just know it was a YouTube issue. But about 90%, 95% of the presentation was recorded and will be available sometime tomorrow. So the majority of the meeting did get recorded. If you try to view it even right now, though, it might be in bits and pieces and not easy to view. So just for the general public out there, if you missed the work session on the data, it will, the majority of the meeting, will show up tomorrow for you. The second thing before we get to the superintendent's report is just to finally give some good news on the COVID front for our staff. Many of you probably received the email, or some of you may have seen the governor's press conference today indicating that Phase 1B Tier 3 will now start on March 15th. That is incredibly good news, yes. A much-needed win for our staff here. And so, just so everyone is aware, we do have multiple plans in place with multiple medical organizations to get our staff, the vaccines, the moment there is supply. So we actually have partnerships now with multiple hospitals and our county health department. So essentially, it will be whoever gets the supply first is who we'll be able to use to get our staff vaccinated as quickly as possible. So we're excited with that, and we're very, very thankful to those organizations who are partnering with us to make sure that we can get those vaccines to staff, essentially, the moment that they are available. Let's all keep our fingers crossed that that actually is March 15th, right? I mean, let's hope that the supply is there. So we were excited to see that actually happen. We're going to move on to 2.01, which is our superintendent's report, and I will turn it over to Dr. Buck.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming, welcome. Spring is just less than four weeks away, so it's exciting to see the snow melt. I like snow, don't get me wrong, but it's fun to have it get warmer, and there's just an energy in the last third of the year, which, believe it or not, as of Monday, we're in the last third of the school year. First off, we have a birthday person in the house, so happy birthday, Dr. Andrews. Something that's not on the report, we just got information on this a couple of days ago. The Governor Parson will be here in Lee Summit on Tuesday next week, March 2nd at 10:15 a.m. over at MIC STA to talk and dedicate a grant that's coming to a virtual reality program that's run by UCM in our facility over there. So we're pretty excited to have the governor. It's unfortunately not open to public because of COVID, but just know the governor's going to be here soon. Several things to highlight today. We have eight high school students receive honors from the National Center of Women and Information Technology. So congratulations to Bethany, Katie, Zoe, Elena, Eleanor, Kyra, and Annabella, and Nina. So congratulations to them. We also have one of our students over at Lee Summit North, Blake, who is one of just 230 Air Force cadets worldwide to be picked to receive an Air Force Junior ROTC Flight Academy Scholarship. So congratulations to Blake. Congratulations to Annika Valmesi from North, who is the state champion diver. So congratulations to her and all three swim teams who did well this last weekend at state. We also have, this is hot off the press today, we have a perfect ACT score over at North. So Bella Washburn is a junior at North and got a perfect ACT score. So congratulations to Bella. Before I go out of the students, just let you know, sectional wrestling is this weekend, and district basketball starts, I think, on Saturday. So we also have those coming up. On the highly qualified staff, I talked about Christie, Mann, and Mason Elementary on their award last week, or last month, so I'll go ahead and move to, this came out just, I think, yesterday. Teacher Lauren Kennedy, who's a first-year science teacher over at North, North's getting a lot of kudos today, received the Missouri Outstanding Beginning Teachers Award from the Missouri Association of Colleges for Teacher Education. So congratulations, Ms. Kennedy. Facility-wise, Lee Summit High School, it's, you can see some work starting to begin over there. Just want to point that out, and then this month, next month, we're going to have some work going on in the courtyard. So, and then not too long after that, you'll start seeing the work connecting the spine between buildings A and B. So that's pretty awesome. Then hot off the press, maybe an hour and a half ago, two hours ago, we got notified that the Kaufman Foundation awarded a $25,000 grant to Meadow Lane Elementary to help out with student achievement gap due to COVID. So thank you to Kaufman Grant, and thank you to all the folks who worked on that. Thank you to Dr. Cockrell, and thank you to Dr. Shelton, who worked with Kaufman to get that grant. And then on parent-community involvement, I just want to thank everyone, staff members, parents, community members, and students who have been participating in the CSIP, the Comprehensive School Improvement Plan, throughout this year as we form a new plan. And so that's going to be coming very soon. We're very excited about that, but that's a lot of work. And then governance-wise, you heard a little bit about the vaccines. I'd also want to give kudos to Truman Medical Center, who's one of our three hospitals we're making plans with, because they contacted us just yesterday and said, hey, we have a few spots for Tier 2 folks, if you have any Tier 2 folks. And so we have 132 individuals going to get their vaccine tomorrow afternoon, thanks to Truman. We do have, obviously, that means we've got to cover some folks, so please be patient to us, with us, parents and students, as we try to make sure our staff get vaccinated. And so hopefully, our buses run at the same time and everything else, but we might have a little bump tomorrow as we try to get vaccinations to our staff. Last, I would like to point out that this week is Public Schools Week, and last week was School Board Recognition Week. And I want to thank everyone in the room, and thank everyone up here at the dais, for everything you do for our district and our community. I can't appreciate you enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Buck. We appreciate that report. We are going to move on to item 3.01. For board members, this was kind of one of the late addition items, an arts education resolution, and we do have a presentation surrounding this resolution. I believe Mr. Ben Martin is here to do the presentation. So we will turn it over to you.
Okay, take off my walking billboard there. Okay. Good evening. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of the arts community of Lee Summit as we request the board to adopt the Arts Are Education Resolution. We're all aware of the outstanding arts programs that Lee Summit has. And you can see the numbers, the huge numbers of students who are involved in the arts in Lee Summit. Thousands and thousands of our students actually take arts courses. And even more importantly, the success that they have, I think, is indicative of the quality of the programs that we have. Success in competitions, scholarships, career opportunities. And then we also do a wonderful job, I think, of creating diverse and inclusive community experiences for our students. In other words, the programs enjoy a wide range of community success. Why is that? I think this statement on this particular slide says it very clearly. Arts education is widely recognized as a vital part of a student's education. Now, how do we know that? How do we know that that is indeed true? Well, there's a growing body of research that says that the arts in education have all kinds of wonderful impacts. And a program out at Cal State Santa Marcos distilled the arguments for arts education into three general areas, and then also 15 specific arguments. They then collected the research that supported each of these arguments. They call it the Arts Equals Opportunity Program. Now, I'm not going to have time to delve into all of these different arguments and such, but I have got to run them by you so that you can see them, and also give you a chance to take a look at a couple of studies with each one of those different arguments. You'll have the PowerPoint that you can then go back and actually make use of those studies and see those arguments in more depth. So let's start it up. The area first is arts education supports excellence in education. Supports deep critical thinking, better attendance, the ability to pursue and succeed in especially post-secondary education. Another argument is the development of the young brain. The arts have an impact on that. They're engaged and motivated, and students just simply test higher. And again, there are studies for each of these that you'll be able to take a look at later. A second major area of argumentation is that arts education lets students live life to the fullest. They experience empathy, kindness. They are able to voice their own stories. Hope and resiliency comes out of study of the arts. And a fourth and final one in that particular area, arts lead to civic engagement and especially lifelong arts participation. A third area is arts education prepares students for the workplace. So we get in-demand employees with high career goals coming out of the arts. Tomorrow's leaders are likely to have had arts background. Creative and innovative individuals, they are able to cooperate and collaborate because of their arts experiences, and arts encourage risk-taking and flexibility. Now, those are all national studies, and of course, it came out of California project there. Now, if you want some Missouri stuff, too, just to make sure that we're well represented, here are two studies that were conducted by Missouri Alliance for Arts Education, of which I was executive director for a while. And they show pretty much the same kind of things. Better attendance, fewer discipline problems, and definitely better test scores in all kinds of different subjects. One thing that we don't talk too much about, and I wish we would more, is how arts education is a great way to prepare students for work. This is from Merrick, the Missouri Economic Research and Information Center. It identifies 70,000, 70,000 Missouri jobs in the creative industries. Quite often, we're talking about workforce preparation. We talk about all kinds of other areas, but we don't talk about the arts. That's a lot of jobs that need to be filled, and of course, there's a lot of people who have to be trained in order to fill those jobs. And that's one of the things that arts education can do. Okay, so if arts education is so great, why am I even here worrying about this with you? Well, there are three problems that are facing us, I think, as a school district and really across the nation in terms of the education establishment. The first is we're facing budget shortfalls. Unfortunately, past experience tells us that when budget shortfalls happen, quite often, it's programs like the arts are the ones that are the chopping block, either for reduction or actual cutting from school budgets and school programs. A second focus that we are concerned about is a focus on remediation. We have a learning loss that is going to have to be made up somehow. Now, that learning loss also happens in the arts as well. But one of the things that sometimes happens is that we double up. And so somebody who has missed or is behind in math will get two courses that they have to take in math. And that means, of course, that someplace a course is going to be lost. And quite often, unfortunately, once again, that is quite often an arts course that is lost. The final one, this is kind of a unique one, the need for personal protective equipment. It's unique to the arts classroom, and in many ways, it is more expensive and more cost-prehibitive sometimes to equip a choir class or a band class with that personal protective equipment. And so we're worried that people will say, okay, if it's costs so much more, we just need to get rid of the program. That's a difficulty. So what should we do about it? Well, we encourage the Lee Summit R7 School District to take these steps. Continue to fund the programs that make sure arts classes are offered across all areas and that they're appropriately scheduled so they are accessible to students. That arts educators continue to be employed and teach in the discipline for which they were trained. Resources that are critical to arts program successes should always be available. And then finally, professional development for arts educators should also be appropriate and accessible for those people. A great first step along the way is what I'm really here to talk about tonight, and that is the Arts Are Education Resolution. You have that in front of you. I'm not going to read the whole thing here. But this resolution says that we, as a school district, we, as a school board, will do everything in our power to maintain arts education within the Lee Summit schools and find any way that we possibly can to expand and make it even more effective and better. So thank you for the opportunity to talk to you, to make my feelings known, to make the community's feelings known. And I'll be happy to answer any questions or respond to any concerns that you might have.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Martin. Does anybody have any questions or comments related to the resolution? Board member Fritchie.
Yes, I just wanted to weigh in on this. I think anybody who knows me knows that I'm a big fan of the arts. I would just say, from my personal experience of being in schools for 30 years and having a daughter who's a music teacher, that oftentimes, the highlight of a student's day comes when they get to go to an art class, whether that's art, music, theater, whatever that arts medium is. Oftentimes, students really connect to those courses, and they really enjoy those courses. And oftentimes, the arts, the arts, and even the extracurriculars that come with those courses, like theater productions, concerts, et cetera, art gallery shows, et cetera, are the reason why many students connect to school and stay in school. That's my personal opinion based on my personal experience. So I am 100% in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. And yep, you're preaching to the choir. That's for sure. No pun intended.
Board member Marshall.
Yes, thank you. Actually, I couldn't agree more with arts as education. And you summed it up very well when you said that arts equals opportunities, especially now in the past year now, wow, where it seems like everyone has been so physically disconnected. Arts, you know, give us the opportunity to be around students and others that we wouldn't normally be around, and it gives us a chance to get to know each other in ways that we wouldn't. So I think arts is an awesome outlet for students to express themselves and to explore different parts of their imagination, their mind, and just really just expose them to what's possible. So I think it's important that we continue to support arts as education and continue to make sure our students have access to the different arts programs that interest them, and just cultivate them as people so that they can really take advantage of how great arts can be for a human.
Thank you, thank you. I encourage you to take a look at some of those studies that are on those slides because they speak to exactly what you're saying.
Thank you for that, Board member Marshall. Board member Allen.
Mr. Martin, I have told you this a number of times over the years that I've known you. Thank you for keeping this a priority, not just here in Lee Summit, but across the state. And thank you for your engagement at the state level, if not the regional level, and really continuing to feed this community in the area of the arts, both through Summit Theater Group and your passion for all of this. And I'm glad you've brought this to the forefront to us. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I did not pay him to say those things.
Any other comments or questions surrounding this particular item? Thank you very much for the presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you all.
We will act upon this item tonight. So if anybody would like to make a motion on that.
I'd be happy to do that. I move that the board approve the Arts Education Resolution as presented. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second around item 3.01, to approve the resolution of the arts education. Just my quick comment under the discussion here. You know, every year, it seems even when I was teaching, most of the budgets seem to be getting cut in anything outside of core classes. So I think anything that we can do to make sure that we keep these as strong as possible, I think, is a benefit to our district. So I think this is really, really good tonight. Other questions or discussions around this item? Ms. Simer, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Well, my phone's not working. You probably just want to do the hand raise again because we're in an open session, and I can't see Dr. Hedrick.
Are we going to do roll call votes on the rest of the stuff like we had been? Oh, we did, we talked about that. We talked about that, yes. Okay, so all those in favor of this particular resolution, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for correcting me there. I appreciate it. Okay, we are going to move on to item 4.01, which are our public comments. And I will ask Board member Fritchie to go over the public comment rules, please.
We appreciate your attendance and your willingness to speak to the board. I wanted to make, take a moment to share a few guidelines. Please remember that while this is a meeting held in the public, this is not a public meeting. The board does not respond to public comments during the meeting. We want to hear what you have to say, and your comments will be noted by the board. And if appropriate, we will direct the subject to the administrators who are responsible for that particular subject matter. As the parliamentarian, I'm going to exercise my authority to keep comments within a reasonable time limit. Therefore, we will be limiting all comments to no more than three minutes tonight. No more than 20 minutes total pursuant of Board Policy BDDH. Your allotted three minutes will be counted down on the screen. Only those who have signed up on the comments from the public forum prior to the meeting will be allowed to address the board. We ask that you refrain from using the names of any students or staff in your remarks, and remain respectful. Lastly, when your name is called, go to the podium and clearly state your name and the organization you represent, if any.
Thank you, Board member Fritchie. Just a note to the general public, we have two speakers tonight. One who has submitted a video that we will be doing towards the end of the public comments, and another who couldn't be with us but did give us a statement to read. And I will be reading that prior to the video. So, and we will make sure and identify who those people are when we get to those particular comments. So for our public comments, we have Casey Jackson, then Erin Gregory. I don't think, is Casey here? I don't think Casey is here. Okay, so Erin, you are first.
I knew that would happen. My name is Erin Gregory, and I'm a parent of a student in the LSR 7 School District. As a parent, I'm here tonight begging for a more diverse, equitable, and inclusive school district that provides my kiddo and all students a multicultural education. White students benefit from diversity and an equitable multicultural education. Extensive research supports this. Goal one of our equity plan is to ensure district-wide practices reflect the needs of our diverse school community. Support the integrated focus and analysis of equity into organizational policies, procedures, and leaderships. But at this time, LSR 7 has no real policy or procedures tied to the equity plan. How can our equity plan not include evaluation, reporting out, and then concrete planning to look at how our own operations, programs, processes, et cetera perpetuate systemic racism? Aside from policy and procedures, goal one also notes leadership. Here's what that looks like, I think. In 2021, we will continue to adhere to our equity policy that was adopted in 2018. All administrative and board policies must and will be examined to be more responsive to the children we serve. Our student handbook is in the final stages of being revised, and oppressive language is being removed. That's part of a very beautiful, if you haven't read it, Facebook post on January 7th from Dr. Mark Bedell, KCPS Superintendent. What a way to lead from the top down with courage and empathy, with no question where he or his district stand on equity. Meanwhile, in Lee Summit, our equity and diverse teachers don't feel supported with the work they're doing in their classrooms. Some teachers, after January 6th, after the inauguration, were directed not to discuss it, not to discuss the history that was made on inauguration day with our Vice President Harris. We have parents complaining about something they call "black supremacy" in our district. Parents who are sharing emails from teachers that are nonetheless bound by confidentiality rules, complaining about assignments that are rooted in curriculum. Recently, some Facebook posts have expressed outrage over inclusion of personal pronouns in email. This is a practice, as I understand it, that's pretty common across LSR 7 and across major companies today as a practice of inclusion. Some of those comments on Facebook have expressed outrage over having personal pronouns, and they cite that this is curriculum. One of these comments says, "Push back. We have to push back." That comment is from one, Bill Brown, who is a member of LSR 7's Business Roundtable, whose mission is to foster a productive relationship. Oh, gosh, that went fast. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marla Stout. And then Rachel Courtney will follow.
Is it okay if I use my own child's name? Okay, I just wanted to clarify since I didn't want to break any rolls. All right, thank you. On February 1st, our daughter Sid, who recently came out as non-binary, went to rehearsal for the middle school musical. At no time during the audition process were grades ever mentioned as a reason to keep Sid from performing in the role she was assigned. Sid was called out in front of peers and cut from the musical with academics stated as the reason. The way this entire situation was handled was improper, unacceptable, and disrespectful to our child. Under normal circumstances, we might have given pause to participation. However, nothing about this year and our child is typical. This child is a straight A, principal's honor roll student who simply shut down. One look at Sid's NWEA scores and traditional quality of work show a very different student than the one presented this past semester, a semester that the district has since admitted, knowing secondary students struggled academically. This past year was supposed to be remembered by a trip to New York City, parts in musicals and camps. Sid was looking forward to eighth grade and being part of an adaptive art class helping special needs students. All of these things were canceled because of COVID. This is a creative, sensitive human who is in the midst of normal teenage discovery while also severing from depression and ongoing... while also severing from depression and ongoing anxiety issues. We thought and have since had agreement from a therapist that engagement in school activities is the best way to improve our child's demeanor and renew her interest in academics. Consider just some of the following symptoms of depression and anxiety specific to teens and pre-teens, and how they would impact the educational experience: social withdrawal, academic decline, self-criticism, inability to concentrate or make decisions, fear of rejection, self-harm, including suicidal thoughts, substance abuse, and cutting. From the undergraduate research journal for the human sciences, a paper titled "The Effects of Extracurricular Activities on the Academic Performance of Junior High Students" highlights that participation in extracurricular activities is associated with an approved grade point average, higher educational aspirations, increased attendance, and reduced absenteeism. Researchers have particularly studied the relationship between extracurricular activities and academic performance in adolescents. One study found that adolescents who participated in extracurricular activities reported higher grades and more positive attitudes towards school. I wish I could say my child is alone, but Sid is one of many, and she's lucky. What happens to the student that does not have the kind of support Sid is afforded? Current LSR seven policies potentially segregate intelligent, talented students who either by policy or lack of inclusion cannot engage in extracurriculars. No student chooses to fail or be left out. These things are the result of circumstances that are generally beyond their control. This district needs to consider updated policies and allow each student to be seen and help them achieve their goals. We already have staff members that do advocate for these students and help keep them engaged with their schools and peers. Administration must follow their lead. That can finish? Administration must follow their lead, especially during an atypical school year, or they only serve to further isolate and reinforce the feeling of inadequacy in our students. I respectfully request that this board and our administration consider every aspect of a student's life, not just academics, as a portal to inclusion in our school community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for the comment. Next speaker is Rachel Courtney.
Good evening, I'm Rachel Courtney. My husband and I have four kids in LSR seven, so we, like many other families, were thrilled with the passing of the equity plan, and tonight I'd like to quickly, in my three minutes, comment on three of those goals. As a parent educator, I want to express my appreciation for the work already happening toward goal three, to supply teachers and students with a more diverse curriculum. Truly fulfilling this goal, though, should include a full audit done by a trained staff of all of our curriculum and testing programs to ensure we're educating with a well-vetted, diverse, anti-racist pedagogy. Because we know representation matters, believe in the role model effect, and understand that cultural exposure breeds empathy and respect, the sixth goal in our equity plan is to retain and recruit a more diverse workforce. I have high hopes that the newly formed Recruitment and Retention Task Force will be able to make a large, able to make large gains in this area, and request that the measurable outcomes be made accessible to the community. Personally, I believe that this goal begins and ends with the retention piece. All teachers, all employees, desire to be supported, valued, and heard. In order to keep and grow the 4% plus of teachers of color that we have, we need to ask them, every one of them, how this plan is working from their point of view, in order to properly address any issues. Besides the vital role these current teachers are playing for our students and staff, they'll also be who potential BIPOC hires look to. We need staff that can genuinely say, "Yes, come to Lee's Summit." And in order to get there, they need to be heard and supported by their admin, by their families, and by their fellow teachers. Speaking of our amazing admin and teachers, the second goal of our equity plan includes professional development and equitable and cultural practices. Last month, Suburban Balance hosted a forum with eight Kansas City districts, including our own, so thank you, Lee's Summit, for attending that. Many teachers and parents very much appreciated the opportunity to listen in as Kansas City came together to discuss what their districts are working on in terms of equity. Discussing that forum, or during that forum, a John Hopkins article was discussed, it urged that every teacher be educated and trained in implicit bias, taught to be culturally competent, and shown how not to exacerbate existing achievement and opportunity gaps. If we ever stand a chance at dismantling institutional racism in this district, every staff member, every staff member, needs that training. But not only the training, they need to each be held accountable and monitored to ensure proper implementation. How are we measuring that? Lastly, I want to appeal to other parents like me. There's only so much that the board, admin, and teachers can do about this problem. Please take an active part to speak to your children early on and regularly, don't assume that they know better, about what they need to be doing to help end appropriated cultural oppression in our schools and city. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Our final in-person speaker is Tyra Surfus.
Hi, my name is Tyra Surfus. I am a teacher in the district and a parent of a student and a future student in the district. I just appreciate you guys letting me speak tonight. Okay, so this year, equity has been the district's number one goal. To better prioritize the number one goal, I'd like to make a few suggestions of how equity can become a sustained movement that creates positive change and better learning and working environments for every person in the district. Unlike other priority goals in the district's past, the role of equity coordinator falls on one person who shares the job of leading two other fully staffed departments. By reading the Assistant Superintendent of Equity and Student Services job description, you can see the challenges of a real focus on equity. This work cannot fall on the shoulders of one person who must also wear two other hats. MIT Sloan Management Review says, "Avoid just hiring a lone chief officer. This pins the entire hopes of an organization on one individual, when in fact, helping the organization adapt to the shifting future of work is everybody's responsibility." To do this work with fidelity, we must have an equity department or team similar to IT, SPED, ELL, and Health Services. Since policies guide the administration are viewed annually and clarify the district's expectations, an equity policy needs to be created. The policy would speak to the commitment to embed equitable practices in every decision and support teachers utilizing inclusive methods and lessons in their classrooms. A board policy would also define LSR seven's dedication to training and equitable practices as non-negotiable for the entire LSR seven community. In addition, every open positions job description should include a commitment to equity. We are working counter to the goal if we continue to hire staff, faculty, and administrators who are unwilling to create a safe space for all students. Every decision made in the district should be viewed through an equity lens. Having a diverse panel sitting at a table when decisions are made does not make our policies, procedures, and structures more equitable, and that thinking cheapens the work. We can no longer provide a space for those who oppose equity. Better policies and procedures are better for everyone. To make the necessary changes, we must have trained leaders embedded in the decision-making processes, along with a diverse panel of DEI supporters. To create measurable progress, we need to apply the 2060-20 rule of change to the equity plan. Simply stated, the work should move at a rate of those currently supporting equity education. Research tells us that if we change our behavior, especially in an unexpected way, our thoughts and feelings about the behavior will also change. If we continue to prioritize comfort over progression, inclusion will remain elusive. We know that change can happen quickly if we make it a priority. Accountability and reassessment are part of any successful plan. Each board meeting should require an update defining progress toward the goal. The evaluation of progress needs to include a tool to measure feelings of inclusion by our BIPOC and other marginalized populations. LSR seven's commitments include sustaining positive relationships among staff, students, families, and community members, and continuing a safe and caring environment. We cannot fulfill these commitments without an unyielding dedication to equity. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, and Tyra, I apologize for mispronouncing your name. I knew better, and so I apologize. Our next speaker is actually somebody who submitted a statement but couldn't be here tonight, so just so everybody knows, I am reading on behalf of Beth Corey. So these are the words of Beth Corey. She has a second grader at Hazel Grove who is in the online academy this year, and also has a two-year-old enrolled in Parents as Teachers. Beth graduated from Greenwood Elementary, Pleasantly Junior High School, and Lee Summit High School, and here is her message to the board and community. "I am speaking tonight for improved leadership in enacting the equity plan and more encouraging, enthusiastic support for other equity activities that are being led by teachers. I am also urging the superintendent and board to make strong statements and look to our peer districts for examples of strong statements and best practices. Why am I speaking tonight? I'm standing up here as a white parent with white children. I've heard that perhaps the district hasn't heard enough from us. We, who are equity, justice, and change-focused, may not be the loudest folks yet. We are also not bullies. We don't use hate speech, nor do we call out teachers by name on social media. But I assure you, there are plenty of us, and we are learning to be louder. I speak also as a Lee's Summit, R7 alum who has moved back here after 15 years outside the state. I share what I see with fellow alums who are not in the community. Are they shocked? No. They know Lee's Summit. But are they disappointed that the school district can't be a role model for a better educational experience? Yes, they are disappointed. Some consider moving back, but are hesitant and consider other districts nearby. What are my fears based on my experiences in LSR seven? Do I imagine we are so far from the Utah school that initially allowed parents to opt out of Black History Month activities? Will we start restricting personal pronouns on signatures of district employees? Will we keep teachers from expanding on non-white perspectives or questioning the curricular expression of institutional racism? Will our discrimination policies ever include the most basic restrictions on hate speech on and off campus? Will we ever have a board champion equity leader who coalesces equity planning as a movement rather than an afterthought? And will my children's teachers ever feel empowered and supported to understand their own biases? The recent equity update in the LSR seven magazine is a soothing piece of PR, but stops short of showing any progress has been made. I hear more from teachers who are doing this work, many of who have had to jump through hurdles, than I hear strong supportive statements from our leadership. I'm urging the board to fill the Assistant Superintendent of Equity position and then trust them as an expert. I urge the board to listen more to your morals than your manners, and to rebuke parents who use degrading speech against the district and teachers. Please don't be shy, make strong statements. Dr. Buck, members of the board, we do not live in a vacuum of what is going on in our world, nor can we live in a vacuum of the experiences of our students and teachers, like we have heard and will hear tonight. Thank you very much for your time." Again, that was from Beth Corey. Our final speaker tonight submitted a video, and the speaker is Alethea Rollins.
Hello, I am Alethea Rollins, a parent of two LSR seven students. I am also here as a representative of Suburban Balance's Lee's Summit Equity Task Force. We believe strongly in the approved equity plan and want to support, inform, and hold you accountable to it. There are two important issues I would like to address this evening: hiring diverse teachers and hate speech. My senior has had two black teachers as she matriculated from third to 12th grade in LSR seven. Given that she has had a total of 62 teachers, that is 3% of all the teachers she's had. My eighth grader, who has been here since kindergarten, has had zero. Out of 46 teachers, none of them have been black. He will enter high school never having had a black teacher, and at this point, the likelihood of him never having had a black teacher when he graduates is pretty likely. Recently, my senior wrote a scholarship essay that described the difficulties she has experienced as a black student in a predominantly white school district. In heartbreaking detail, she identified the struggles in elementary, middle, and high school. A primary note of concern was the lack of diversity among her teachers. Please note, I use the term "teacher" and not "staff" to make the point that while support staff is just as important to a school as teachers, it is vitally important that our kids have diverse teachers. Consistent with goal six of the equity plan, I'm here to ask you to prioritize efforts to proportionately recruit, retain, and promote teachers who reflect our student population. And I urge you to consider that a diverse faculty is not just for my kids. All students benefit from seeing, building relationships with, and being taught by diverse faculty. In addition, I would be remiss if not to continually remind you of the important work needed with regard to policy and procedures around hate speech. I encourage you to put in place a clear, appropriate, and detailed discipline policy regarding hate speech. I have reviewed the harassment discipline policy and found it inadequate. It is difficult to find, it provides broad leeway in application, and it is subjective and left up to the administrator to determine if a student should simply have a conversation with the principal, or be expelled, or something in between those two. There is much context to be unpacked in making this type of decision. Further, data consistently supports that disproportionate numbers of students of color get harsher discipline than their white peers. A clear and concise policy will help reduce bias in disciplined decisions and application. If we are to provide an equitable educational experience for all students, then the LSR seven school district needs to take a strong stand against hate speech. Consistent with goal one, the first step is to create a clear and concise discipline policy. Thank you.
Okay, that will conclude our public comments for this evening. Okay. We will move on to item 5.01, which is our board reports or meetings attended, and so we do typically try to move around the room here. So we will start with Board Member Doan tonight.
Great, thank you. All right, Lisa McCares, our executive director, has resigned. She's moving on to a different nonprofit position, so we will be looking for a new wonderful replacement. Rachel Segobio was very, did a very good job with us in the last five years, but she needed a new challenge, I guess, so, she will be very missed. The Mayor's Character Breakfast, we're going to postpone until January 22nd of 2022, and we will celebrate our recipients on social media, and then we will also celebrate them again next January. Team Lee's Summit, we had, I'm just going to say, the best meeting we've ever had since I've been on the board. Just going to go ahead and say that right out loud. And we will be voting on one of our decisions, or discussions, later in this meeting. And let's see, I visited Miller Park, Cedar Creek, and Pleasantly, and I look forward to about six other ones, but I'm, it was just so fun to see the kids laughing, and the principals were all very positive. I know it's been a tough year, we all know that, but I really appreciated the principals and how they were working for the kids. That is my report, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Doan. We will move to Board Member Hedrick.
Thank you. I just have a couple to report. We did have a board policy team meeting and discussed a number of policies and follow-up to work that has been occurring most of the year. We will be giving the board, the full Board of Education, a presentation from that team, I believe, at our main work session. The other committee meeting I attended this week was the Finance Committee meeting, and Board Member Campbell will give that report in a little bit, a little bit further down on our agenda. And then I also attended a Real World Learning Zoom question and answer session, which was very helpful in understanding that program, understanding what market value assets are, understanding how those can benefit each student, and not just students who are planning to go to college. So I would encourage other board members to take a look at their website that's been developed, to have information about Real World Learning. It's LSR7.org backslash R W L, and I believe also that group is planning to make a presentation to the board at a future work session. And that's all I have to report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Hedrick. Board Member Marshall?
Thank you, Board President. Board Member Allen and I were just talking that our meetings are like a whole month before, so by time, by time we get to the board meeting, a lot of the things has happened, so we're kind of outdated, like our next meeting is tomorrow, and we won't report until Friday, but anyway. A month ago, at our meeting, we talked about, City Council talked about their current their current financial situation and what's to be expected within the next year, and they also talked about the Diversity and Inclusion Committee that was created and approved in their most recent resolution with that. And just like our stuff, the City Council stuff is on their website, very easy to find. We had presentations from the state legislature, of course, talking about various bills that impact public education. So, just as a tidbit for anyone who likes to get information quickly, I went to the Missouri School Board Association's website, and within like three clicks, you can access all the legislation that directly impacts public education. The School Board Association's website digs deep into how it impacts it, actually gives you various talking points for when you contact your representatives, and after or as action is taken on specific legislation, it actually tells you who voted and which way they voted. So, in addition to contacting our representatives, we can also contact the other ones as well to express our opinions. So, three clicks. You can just Google "Missouri School Board Association." On their homepage, their landing page, there is a megaphone, an orange megaphone, that says Advocate for Public Education. And when you click on that, it will open up all the different legislative, all the bills that I just mentioned that impact public education. That's all I have.
Thank you, Board Member Marshall. Board Member Allen?
All right, I was participating in the Government Relations Committee meeting with Ms. Marshall. Dr. Buck was in attendance at that as well. I was in Jefferson City advocating for public schools, dropped letters to eight of our local representatives, three or four of our local senators, attended a couple of the Education Committee meetings. Typically, Tuesday morning is the House Education Committee meeting, Tuesday at noon is the Senate Education Committee meeting, typically an hour to an hour and a half. So, there are a lot of bills out there being considered and discussed, and I think action on our part and communication on our part would be well-invested time. I've participated in some school visits, and as other members have, and we'll see quite a few other visits in March. I think Megan Marshall and I are going to Lee Summit North and Bernard Campbell soon. We were supposed to go last week when it was 25 below zero or something. I was at Summit Point Elementary in Trail Ridge this week, and then also had a tremendous visit in a gem of a building and a program at Miller Park with Ms. Doan. And I will concur and agree with Ms. Doan, we've had three Team Lee Summit meetings: January 27th, February 4th, and the 18th, and then we have another Team Lee Summit meeting coming up in March, on March 4th. So, it has been a very active committee and doing some very, very good work. And hats off to Judy Sklerstein as well, as she's been a gem as ever.
Thank you, Board Member Allen. Board Member Campbell?
Thank you, Board President Murdock. I wanted to join Dr. Buck in saying thank you to all of my fellow board members for your service and acknowledge both your service as well as our past board members. I think celebrating that is really important, and I appreciate all of you, the knowledge and the skills that each of you bring to our discussions, and the heart that you bring to these discussions and to our meetings. I value you, I value your service to our students, staff, and community, and I value you in helping me become a better board member. So, thank you. I also went and visited a school, I went to Great Beginnings, and it is just that. It is a great beginning for our kids. I will share on a personal level, my youngest got the opportunity to attend Great Beginnings, although it was at the older building, so that was a few days ago. But, I will tell you, going through and touring the building, the facility that we have for our early learners was an amazing opportunity. My thanks to Carrie Bame, incredible leader, and Jeannie Cook, Assistant Principal, also incredible leader, in taking me through the tour of the building and in sharing with me so well, not only introducing me to teachers and students, but also sharing every aspect of what goes on in that building on a daily basis. The library that they have not only is full of books, but now has a librarian. And they shared that not only has that librarian done so much for the students that attend, but has also provided so much learning and opportunity for the teachers that work there as well. So, that's an awesome place as well. They shared a lot about the Head Start Program, not just the amazing work that we partner with the Mark Organization on, who helps us with that grant assistance and funding, but also to all the services that that provides, the learning for the students, as well as the additional services that can be accommodated for the families as well to assist them. Also, seeing all the teachers hard at work with all the children that day was amazing. Looking at the physical therapy room, it mirrored a room that I've seen down at Children's Mercy. And just to be able to have that in district really is amazing, I think, and really beneficial. Also, we talked about the Parents as Teacher Program, and that even in a virtual world, we've been able to continue that Parents as Teachers opportunities for all of our families in Lee Summit. And they talked about, you know, the teachers get down on the floor, and while there's still a computer there, as you get down on the rug and you start playing, that that computer screen melts away. And what an awesome opportunity for our families to be fully engaged with that learning and become learners themselves in sharing that information with their kids too. So, I'm really excited not only to be able to tour that facility, but to be able to know that our voters in our district supported that bond that will now allow us to open that second location, and that we will not have to wait list kids to be a part of this great opportunity. So, I just wanted to share that. It was just great. And thank you, Carrie and Jeannie, for that opportunity as well. I did not get to sit on the webinar on the Real World Learning, but I'm going to, and thank you, Board Member Hedrick, thank you. Hedrick! I couldn't see her. Hedrick, for bringing that up, because I also wanted to say thank you for the updates to the website, because I think they're awesome. I did get a chance to review those, and just great information, because I can't tell you, since I've been on the board, how many people ask me, "Well, at the schools, what do they really do to help kids get a job?" You know? And that website tells you what the school district is doing to help kids get a job. So, I think that's fantastic. And I also attended the Policy Committee with Board Member Hedrick, and I wanted to say a thank you to Dr. Carlson, who leads that committee, and also to the other members of the committee. Sometimes, policy work and policy conversations can be a little dry, but I...
No.
Yes. But, these folks are fully engaged, and we have had some great conversations looking at equity in our policies and discussing that and really getting into that work, and I've really just been honored to be a part of that committee as well. I also participated in an Insurance Committee meeting. I was really excited to see they have built out a risk matrix to evaluate the options as we're getting ready for that RFP process, to really put things in sections that help us know the benefits, as well as the risk to the district that that can create. And I just wanted to say thank you to Sarah McMillan and to Dr. Miller for building out that risk matrix, and also thank you for the work that you do to make insurance understandable for non-HR, non-insurance people, because that's important as we're getting ready to get into this RFP process, to understand what that means and what that looks like. So, thank you to that. I also appreciate that you have an Insurance Committee, and that committee is made up of representation from every building in our district. And I think as we get into these discussions around the RFP, that committee is going to be very important in ensuring that we all move along through change together. And so, I'm very excited to continue to be a part of the Insurance Committee, and thank you for the hard work that that takes. The last item is the Finance Committee, and that was a great meeting, and I'll share more about that here in a minute.
Thank you very much, Board Member Campbell. Board Member Fritchie?
Thank you, President Murdock. All right. First of all, I want to talk about the Comprehensive School Improvement Plan. That strategic planning team met on February 1st, and during this meeting, we focused on generating goals and action steps to help inform our peak priorities that have already been finalized. And at that point, Dr. Kephart and our administrators, as we speak almost, are creating a draft based on the input from that entire team. And so, we will see that draft on March 1st at our next meeting, and that is supposed to be our final meeting, right? So, that has been a very intensive team this year, since we only reevaluate or rewrite our CSIP every, what, five years? So, anyway, looking forward to that, March 1st, and then they will home that, and it'll come to the board, and you guys will get to see what the team came up with. All right? The next, I'd like to talk about Lee Summit Educational Foundation. The foundation invites you to the annual Taste of Lee Summit, and by the way, it's just 16 days away. It's on Saturday, March 13th, from 6:45 to 8:00 p.m., virtual style. Keep in mind that the tickets are only $40 this year. That's a big savings from the normal price of tickets. And so, you can purchase your tickets and then watch in the comfort of your home, maybe order from one of our great restaurants who are offering discounts this year. So, be sure and go on Lee Summit to www.lseedfoundation.com, or go to the Facebook page and click on that link. The theme this year is "A Magical Night of Giving," and it will include crowd favorites like the silent and the live auction, Plinko, and the diner round package, which has some great gift cards from all the restaurants that are either participating and even some who are not participating this year in the event. We've been able to use, I've gone around, I was on the restaurant committee, so I've gone around to several restaurants and used those puppy dog eyes and going, "Please give cards." So, anyway, we've got some good ones. We have a comedian this year, his name's Todd Lemansk, and he will astound our guests with magic tricks, and the guests will learn how community generosity creates classroom magic. So, looking forward to that night, please join us. Also, wanted to make a quick note about school visits. Last week on Friday, had the opportunity to visit two of our elementary schools, and that was Hawthorne Hill and Meadow Lane. And then, this last Tuesday, along with Board Member Doan, I visited Cedar Creek and Pleasantly Elementary Schools. It was good to get out into our schools, it just felt so good to get out there, to talk with our teachers, to see how they're feeling, to see, you know, how things are going with them, to see, you know, how they've tried to reconfigure their classrooms, and how the kids seem to be so happy to be back to school, and even the teachers seem to be so happy to be back to school. And so much, we want to thank the principals for taking the time to just to show us around and give us that insight. You just, it really helps to get out into our schools and really understand why we do what we do up here at the dais every month. Finally, Teacher Education Academy at Summit Technology Academy. I spoke there with the students on Monday of this week about the function of school board, responsibilities, what to expect at our school board meeting. Yay, exciting! You know, I wanted to say to them, "You're never going to get that hour and a half to two hours back." But no, 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 there are some exciting things that happen. Many of the students will be watching or are watching our meeting tonight, this evening. And hi, students at the Teacher Academy and Summit Tech, we're glad you're with us tonight. And I've talked to President Murdock and asked him if it would be okay if we could take turns tonight all across the dais and introduce ourselves to all of our students who are in Teacher Academy who are watching. So, let's start with Board Member Marshall down there.
Well, how much do they want to know?
Well, you might just...
You just said it was a two-hour meeting, so...
How about your name, and, you know, and what you do for the board, and then maybe how long you've been on the board, something like that?
All right, well, hello. I'm Megan Marshall, I am one of the newly-elected board members, so I haven't even passed the curve to a year yet, just past, what, six months? Part of my responsibility, in addition to regular board business, which I'm sure Board Member Fritchie explained very well to you, is to sit on the Government Relations Committee, which is what I just gave an update on, and that is a committee where we sit on with various elected officials from the state, all the way down to the local level, and we discuss a lot of legislation and things going on in our different areas of responsibilities, and learn how they all cross-pollinate with each other and build relationships with the hopes of supporting one another.
All right, Mike Allen, I've been in Lee Summit area since '92. Wife and I have two students here, and was elected in, what was it, April of 19, so it'll be two years, and so, one more year of service, and then that would be my first term, so, there we go.
I'm Kathy Campbell. I'm newer to the board, like Board Member Marshall. So, I was elected in June. I've lived in Lee Summit, gosh, 20, over 20 years. Both of my sons grew up through the Lee Summit schools, and I really wanted to work on the board because servant leadership is important to me, and because our children in the Lee Summit area and their education and the public school system is also very important to me. So, that really drove me to run for the board, and I am enjoying being a part of the board and helping move this district through COVID, and helping move this district around Real World Learning and all of the great things that we've been talking about in these meetings.
Thank you, go ahead.
My name is Ryan Murdock, I'm the current Board of Education President. It's my job to try to keep these meetings short, which I am not succeeding at. In addition to... You're welcome. In addition to the various committees that I do serve on, it is my job to help put together the agenda with Dr. Buck to hold the leadership meetings and to try to navigate the different issues of the district so that the seven of us can come to a consensus as many times as possible. So, I will continue to try to do that for as long as possible. We'll go to Dr. Buck, and then we'll go to Dr. Hedrick.
First off, thank you for choosing education and being interested in it. I can tell you, education was a lifesaver for me as a kid, and I couldn't have been happier than the mid-'90s to become a science teacher, a coach, a sponsor, and it is an awesome job. Kids are awesome, they need you, and I'm happy you're choosing this profession. So, reach out if you need help, and we're excited about the future with you in it.
Dr. Hedrick?
Yes, thank you, this is Judy Hedrick. I have been in Lee Summit about 31 years. Both my kids graduated from Lee Summit High School. And I would say that it's a great opportunity for me to show the passion that I have for public education. I believe that it can make all the difference for each student, and to work with my fellow board members and administration on behalf of our students and families in our community.
Thank you, Dr. Hedrick.
All right, welcome, students. I'm Julie Doan, I have lived in Lee Summit for almost 56 years, and have been on the board since 2015. I went through Lee Summit schools, and so did my two daughters. And I just want to encourage you to go and get your teaching certificate and then come back to us. So, we're a great district to work for, and keep going with your teaching. Thank you.
I just wanted to finish up by, I already introduced myself to the students, but just for those of you out there in TV land, I'm Kim Fritchie, I'm the Vice President of the Board this year, and this is my fourth year on the school board, and it's just been a real pleasure, and I so enjoyed speaking with the Teacher Academy students on Monday, and I appreciate their instructor, Kathy Nash, she was giving them some great instruction and all of the classroom experiences that our classroom teachers are giving them as they go out into our school district. So, thank you, everyone who's involved with that and supporting that. That's all for me.
Thank you, Board Member Fritchie, I will be very brief here. I was not able to attend the Insurance Committee due to some internet issues, but I did get a chance to look at the risk matrix, and so, I do think that that was really good.
a chance to look at the risk matrix, and so, I do think that that was really good and a good suggestion as well, so thank you for putting that together. I did participate in the CAC Steering Committee meeting on February 8th, the Citizens Advisory Committee Steering Meeting on February the 8th, and then we had a full meeting last night where we did, talked about some legislative advocacy issues, and then we also addressed just a couple of other things, I don't want to get too far into it here because then we're going to take too much time, but it was a good meeting last night, we did spend a lot of time on the different bills, and then how to advocate was kind of the, the big issues that we were hitting last night. We did our board leadership meeting with Dr. Buck, Vice President Fritchy, and myself earlier in the month, and on January 28th, I think there was either four or five of us on the board that were a part of the Cooperating School Districts of Greater Kansas City meeting, where we not only had a business meeting early on, but then we had a regular full meeting, and that also was kind of dedicated to more of a legislative advocacy position in terms of what would be good for public education, what could be bad for public education. So, thank you to the board members who were able to join on that call, that was a few hours that we did there as well. And then I look forward to visiting schools next, next week, the first one, I believe, up is March 1st, I'll be at Lee's Summit High School, so that'll be the first one that I will be at, starting next week, so I'm looking forward to those visits as well. Okay, we are going to move on here to Item 6, which is our Finance Reports, and so, it sounds like we're going to turn it over to Board Member Campbell.
Great, thank you, Board President Murdock. I attended the Finance Committee meeting, as I mentioned, and we discussed a list of contracts that are $15,000 or less, I'm not going to go through those individually, but everyone has that document available to review. We also discussed some of the larger items, AT&amp;T and Allegiant Technologies Telephone Services, so that's for a new phone circuit, and the additional functionality that provides is that it does provide failover to us, so if there's a phone problem at one school, it will fail over, and then that phone problem will be resolved. Brazen Technologies, the virtual career fair platform, that will assist us in our HR department with Dr. Del Summ around the diversity recruitment, so this is a very important one to move forward with this year as well. Sunbelt Staffing Ratification, so we've had some challenges in this COVID pandemic in recruiting LPNs for our district, and so, there are 4.5 positions, this staffing group will assist us with filling those positions. So, also important, as we, you know, are bringing students back and need to have those positions filled. The Alpha Point Ratification, we, again, had a challenge in filling the position for the Orientation and Mobility Specialist for our district, and so, Alpha Point is going to assist that, filling that for us as a contract service until we can fill that position, hopefully, for next school year. The ATX Learning Ratification, same situation, we needed to hire an occupational therapist, we found a candidate, and we were able to hire that candidate, but they're not available until the fall of 2021, so this will provide the contract services until that can be filled. And then we shifted to the Facilities, and Kyle Gurrell was kind enough to go into a lot of detail for me around some of the bond items on here. One item ahead of the bond items was just a Control Service Contract, which was around some of the, let me grab my, the HVAC's Control Systems is part of a three-year service agreement, so that will continue that work. And then we started to talk about some of the bond projects, so there was a change order for the Athletics Project and for Lee's Summit High School, so there are some items that are coming in that we needed to do, that needed, that we'll need to approve the change order for, and Kyle broke all those out so that we have all that information. There is the contingency, and there's adequate funds in the contingency for these change orders, so I would recommend that we move forward with that approval. Also, we talked about the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment for the Lee's Summit High School project, and this was really exciting because we had gotten the initial Guaranteed Maximum Price, number one, and that was for a portion that we approved previously, this is the second piece, and this fully funds then the remainder of the project, and it's coming in quite a bit under budget, about $600,000 under budget, which will allow us then, as a future piece, not tonight, but as a future piece, Kyle and Dr. Miller will be presenting for us to look at a bid for the physical education space and the current weight room. So, we'll have some additional, but because we're so far under budget, there should be no problem with including that. And it was included in the original list of projects, there was just concern about being conservative in the bidding process, so move forward with that tonight as well. And then we have, the next item was the Architectural Contract for the Middle School Renovations, so we've talked a lot about the new middle school, these are the renovations for the existing middle schools, and I was really excited to see some details on that. So, for, of course, there's the accommodation for the sixth grade that will be moving to the middle schools, that's a large piece of this. But also, at Pleasantly Middle School, that will get a new facelift, so where we've all seen the wavy entrance for years, that will go away, and it'll get a facelift on the front, which will also then increase the security of the entrances and allow the administration office to be there at the forefront. The Campbell Middle School will receive renovations to the cafeteria, the music area, the administrative office around the security as well, and there's some changes to the basement. And then at Summit Lakes, they will also receive the renovation to the administration area and that entry lobby, again, additional security for our students and for our administration and, and staff there at the schools. So, this will come out of the Architect and Engineering Line Item, and again, my thanks to Dr. Miller and Kyle Gurrell because they've done such a great job on the bond report, the finance listings, it's easy to see where these change orders and where these things hit the overall budget, and to know exactly what line items are impacted and, and how we can move forward with that. So, any questions on those so far? Okay. Then we also have the Pro Mechanical that we looked at for Meadow Lane and Westview for their walk-in freezers, they're very dated, and so, this contract will allow those to be replaced and upgraded, and that actually will come out of Nutrition Services Budget, and it's within the budget amounts. So, I think that is everything that I have for the update. Okay? So, I will now move to approve, we do need to do a transfer of funds from the General Fund to the Special Revenue Fund to pay the bills, so I move to approve the transfer of $1,525,468.90 from the General Fund to the Special Revenue Fund.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Item 6.02 to transfer funds from the General Fund to the Special Revenue Fund, is there any discussion on this item? Okay, all those in favor of this item, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Board Member Campbell?
I move to approve the Treasures Report and the payment of the bills.
Second.
We have a, we have a motion and a lot of seconds, so, there we go, so, I think Board Member Marshall was first, first in, so we'll, we'll give her credit for it. So, we have a motion and a second for Item 6.03, is there any discussion on this item? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Board Member Campbell, appreciate it. We are going to move on to Item 7.01, which is our, or Item 7, our Consent Agenda Items for tonight, so I will entertain a motion on those items before any discussion.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda Items as presented, second.
We have a motion and a second for our Consent Agenda Item 7.01 through 7.15, are there any, is there any discussion related to any of these items, or any comments, questions? Okay, I don't see any questions or comments around any of the items on Item 7, so, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're moving on to Item 8, so this is 8.01, these will be each of our individual items for decision tonight. 8.01 is the change order that Board Member Campbell just spoke about in terms of the Lee's Summit Athletics, so I would take a motion on this before any discussion, please.
I move that the board approve Change Order Number 1 for the Lee's Summit R7 District Athletics Facilities Project at a total cost of $210,917.10 as detailed in the attachment.
I think, I think that number, you, you missed the number, can you-
Did I?
Mm-hmm. 201, so.
I have 210.
We're good. Dr. Miller, do you know which number is correct then, because we have two different numbers?
Okay.
Change Order Documents, yes, it says 201-9917.
Oh, okay, because the motion said 210, okay, so I, I amend that to $201,917.10, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for Item 8.01 for the change order for Lee's Summit Athletics. Board Member Campbell?
I'll just, I'd like to make a note, and I think it might have been noted up above on Item 2.02, but this is for the Athletics Project, but it also impacts the Lee's Summit High School Renovations Project, so I just wanted to note that for everyone.
Appreciate that. Any other questions or comments related to 8.01? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're going to move to Item 8.02, this is the Architecture Service Contract for our middle school renovations, also mentioned in the Finance Committee Report to DLR Group, so I would take a motion on this item.
I move that the board approve the contract with DLR Group for the middle school renovation project according to fees detailed in the attachment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Item 8.02 to award the contract to DLR Group. Any questions or comments related to Item 8.02? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of Item 8.02, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 8.03, this is our Lee's Summit High School Building Renovation Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment Number 2, just like Board Member Campbell said, we've done one part of this, this is the second part, so I'll entertain a motion on 8.03.
I move that the board approves a GMP Amendment to the J.E. Dunn Construction for the Lee's Summit High School Edition Renovation Project as detailed in the attachment.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for Item 8.03, are there any questions or comments related to this item? I have one on this one, and it just details around the construction items and the way that they are going about the renovation, I know that we've had a couple of different people mention just about the construction fencing, parking issues, and stuff like that. As they get even further into construction, will we lose any more of the territory as that renovation happens, or are we kind of at the maximum of where they've roped off? If that makes sense what I'm, what I'm asking there. I know there's only so much we can do, I'm just curious, so.
There is some parking on the east side of a building where mobile classrooms will sit, that will be taken here in the next month. Though, those parking spaces have been factored into the count and evaluated by school administration for the number of parking permits that need to be issued, and some visitor and staff parking, so we believe that the total count on site will still accommodate their needs through the renovation project.
I see that knocked out the second question on permits, so perfect. Any other questions or comments related to 8.03? Okay, all those in favor of 8.03, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 8.04, this is a resolution to essentially thank and reward our staff for, I mean, there's no other way to say it, a year like any other. And so, I'm going to first turn it over to Dr. Buck to kind of address how this all came to be, and Team Lee's Summit and stuff like that, and then we'll get into any discussion.
Well, first off, I came originally from you, Ryan, so, early November, or maybe at end October, somewhere around there, Ryan had this idea of, hey, how can we thank our staff, both certified and support staff, and, and he had this idea, and he, we brought to November Board Meeting, and then the board asked, hey, can we get input, listen to Team Lee's Summit and see how they would like to be thanked? And so, Team Lee's Summit loved the question, they were worried, can we afford it? But then, they were very grateful to the entire Board of Education for considering this, they couldn't think of anything better than this, they thought it was very appropriate, and thus, they charged the administration to put together a resolution, which we visited with Joe Hatley, and Joe helped form this resolution for your consideration tonight, so it's one additional day just added to this year, but then, once you have it, it follows normal board policy, so a PDO and PTO.
Thank you, Dr. Buck, I appreciate that. Before any questions or comments related to this, we would take a motion on this item, please.
I'll do that. I move to approve the resolution for extra PDO, PTO for eligible employees as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for Item 8.04 for the additional PDO and PTO for our employees, is there any discussion or questions around this item? Board Member Campbell?
I just, Ms. Marshall, how important is it to have a team like this? You know, earlier you're talking about teachers and watching this, teacher boarding, teachers, you know, that's part of being on the board is, you absolutely want to say thank you for an impressive year like this, so- Thank you, but, but also important that we look at the cost of, of this, and so, it may seem like one day, but there is significant cost to the district, and I appreciate my fellow board members' view of the thank you and the thought that went into this, so I'm excited to support this.
Any other comments or questions surrounding 8.04? Board Member Doan?
Probably Mike Allen's going to say the same thing, but Team Lee's Summit was really excited to tackle this idea, and we just really wanted to say thank you to all the teachers and, and staff, we forget about the staff sometimes, but it was just a really great conversation, and we all worked together to, to, I guess, move this forward.
Thank you, Board Member Doan. Board Member Allen?
Thank you, Ms. Doan, and thank you, President Murdock. In that same spirit, I want to mention, and I brought the roster, membership roster of Team Lee's Summit members, that include, that includes also representation from Maintenance, Transportation and a bus driver who's representing Transportation, certainly folks from Stansbury Leadership Center, elementary schools, secondary and high schools, and then some administration, and then Julie and I are on that as representatives from the board. And I mention that because it is a very strong cross-representation of all aspects of the district, who have put in a ton of time and effort and overtime and the like, and the input from each of those representatives was equal, not just patting teachers on the back who need the accolades because they have been doing quite a bit of heavy lifting, but administrators as well, and, you know, from the person in Maintenance and Bus, all the way to the top end, but also Nutritional Services, all of those folks. So, it was a very collaborative, collective decision, and the numbers were wrestled with quite a bit, so none of this is being taken lightly, but it is, yeah, in my, in my opinion, well-earned, well-deserved, and, you know, I'm glad we're supportive of the work, thank you.
Thank you for that comment, Board Member Allen. Board Member Fritchy?
Yes, I just wanted to say, I spent most of the day yesterday reading through the Team Lee's Summit survey that Linda was so kind to resend to me, but in reading through all of those comments from our employees, it is, is, it's very, it's very clear, we knew, we know that it's, it's been a tough, tough year for all of our employees, every, every single employee group. I know I've read, you know, Nutrition Services Staff folks, our- I know I've read, you know, nutrition services staff folks, our facilities folks, our transportation folks, and of course, our, our certified staff members. But in reading through all of those comments, you could see the, the difficulties and, and the things that they have had to surmount this year to make this year a success, or at least to try to make this year a success for, for our students. And so for that big team effort, I'm, I am totally in favor of, of giving each of these employees a PDO, PTO day because I wish we could even do more, but this is, this is the best expression that I think we can, we can show them at this time, so. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? My only comment would be, you know, this came to fruition in November, and at the time, that was probably when we were in the absolute worst spot, right, as a district. And so in a time when I think opinions vary widely all across our community on a lot of different things, in many cases, our staff has taken a pretty big brunt of that. And that doesn't mean, by the way, just our teachers, clearly our teachers do too, but people sitting out here as well have taken the brunt of those very, very differing opinions as we've gone through this school year. So on behalf of the seven of us, thank you. This was a small, a small thing that we hopefully could do for everybody, so we just wanted to say thank you as a board, and we will continue to do our best to try to support you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor of item eight point zero four, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Again, thank you to all the board members and everybody out there. Eight point zero five, this is, as some of you know, Dr. Hedrick is not able to join us in person. She is tending to a personal matter, and so just as a, we, we are required to excuse her absence from the physical attendance. So we need to get a motion for item eight point zero five.
I move to excuse Board Member Hedrick from physical attendance at tonight's meeting and allow her to participate via speaker phone.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? And I believe Board Member Hedrick will be abstaining from this vote, is that correct, Mrs. Mert?
Yes, I will be abstaining.
Uh, Board Member Doan?
I just wanted to say that Board Member Hedrick is a valuable part of our team up here, and we miss her, but she always is engaged via phone or Zoom, so I appreciate her very much.
Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of this motion, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously with one abstention. And we will move on to item nine point zero one. We have two presentations tonight, so the first is going to be from Lee Moore, who is going to give us an update on the Mason Elementary project.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board Members, Dr. Buck. Here to talk to you a little bit about what we've been doing on Mason Elementary the last few months. I think it's been a couple of months since we've seen you, so we'll get right started here on, oh, I guess I controlled the slide here. Okay. So this is kind of starting out with our overall phasing plan, and this will help kind of explain where all we're working at right now. So currently, we're working in the green area to your right, so that's the addition. And I'm going to break that out in three phases here in a minute. And then we're also working in the blue area, which is the first phase of our renovation. So in the northernmost part of that green addition is the storm shelter. We've just wrapped up CMU walls in that area, we're going to start steel and slab-on-grade in that particular area next week. Move down just below that top square is the media center there, the, the green. And we actually just poured the slab-on-grade in that area today. Steel is going to be complete this week, and looking to start metal stud framing for the exterior skin in the following weeks. And then that lower, kind of brighter green box there, which is the four classrooms and administration area. Actually, that's the location we just poured the slab-on-grade today. And the steel is complete, exterior framing and skin will start there next week as well. And then the blue area is our renovation space, so we have completed the demolition. Mechanical electrical plumbing rough-in is ongoing in that area, as well as getting ready to start wall framing. And, and then in March, we'll be working on painting and ceiling, so we're looking to have that part of the project, the blue area, be complete in June. And then over the next couple of months in the green area, by the next time we see you, we'll have most of the skin roof complete, and we'll be starting on finishes in the addition part. And this is just some of the stuff I just covered, so I'll jump into some pictures. So crazy to think that a little over a week ago, that was the condition of our site out there. And thanks to Mother Nature and the Missouri roller coaster weather, we've, we've thawed out at this point. So this is the area of the administration and the four classrooms on the south end. Again, these pictures are almost two weeks old, because this was actually prior to the winter blast. So a lot's happened since then, but this is the area where we poured the slab-on-grade today. You can see the structural steel there, and we'll start, we'll start framing that in next week. The next picture, this is the, kind of the middle area, this is the media center. As you can see, on this day, we actually had just wrapped up the slab-on-grade. But there's actually steel in this area, like I mentioned in the previous update. You can see behind there some masonry walls, you can see the green tarp. That wall is completely done, and that kind of finishes our storm shelter, so that's the south part of the storm shelter area. And this is, looking west, this is our north construction drive, north of the addition. You can see the temporary masonry enclosure and scaffolding, so that, those, that measure was actually allowed us to work over the winter on the masonry and then keep the project going. You can see our drive there, the buildings to your right are actually the temporary classrooms out there. And then this is just one picture of the interior, you can see the, the black dots in the back and the masonry. That's actually where marker boards have been taken off, but we've completed the openings for the flexible learning spaces, so we've opened up those classrooms, and that's kind of what you see is that scaffolding and shoring there for the structure. And again, we're working on all the mechanical plumbing and electrical and, and metal framing there at this point, so. With that, you know, we talked a little bit about future construction activities, so digging out of the snow, we've accomplished that. We talked about the framing renovation work, and then the red area in the plan, that's the work going on this summer, so late May, by the time we have our next update, we'll be right on the edge of getting ready to start that project, that phase, once school's out for the, the spring, so. With that, that's all I've got to offer unless anyone has any questions, and appreciate the opportunity to see you guys tonight.
Thank you for the update. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding the Mason update? Uh, Board Member Fritchie?
Just, just a really quick one, did you guys work all of last week?
So there were some days that it was just too cold to work, but we were able to work a portion of the, through the winter storm there, so.
Okay, so it didn't slow down your timeline?
No, no, and we've got weather days built into the schedule too, so that's obviously helped us with working through the winter.
Thanks very much.
Uh, Board Member Marshall?
Yes, thank you. Actually, coincidentally, Mason Elementary was the school I visited this afternoon, and you're absolutely right, the pitchers don't do justice to what's going on there now, it's, it's, I mean, we were there for the groundbreaking ceremony, and that was the last time I was there. Coincidentally, I forgot how far out it is, so that was a, a good drive, just going, coming from the bottom of Lee Summit, going all the way up. But yes, there's a lot happening on the new construction site, as well as how the, the, I guess, the seasoned building is dealing with maneuvering around, and it's, I mean, you wouldn't know construction is going on outside once you're in the building, and I think that that's, that's really important to mention, especially in the learning environment. So it's, it's, it looks great, and I can't wait to see the, the last pillar get put on, so.
Thank you, Board Member Marshall. Any other comments, questions? Okay, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Item nine point zero two, we're going to have a presentation about our career and technical education program and that evaluation, and Shannon Booth is here, and so we will turn it over to you, Shannon, for this presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Members. It just so happens that February is Career and Technical Education Month, so I'm really excited to be here to talk about our amazing career and technical education programs that we have throughout the district. The pictures that you see here on this slide showcase some of our different school store spirit wear items. And throughout all of the craziness that this year has brought, we have still had marketing internships, and those internships run the school stores. And the funds that we get from the sale of the spirit wear and the different items that they have at the school store help fund our marketing program and our career and student technical organization of DECA. So these pictures showcase some supervised business experience students from Lee Summit West modeling their spirit wear as we were trying to promote those virtually earlier this year. As well as our middle picture there, our Lee Summit students promoting their spirit wear, and our awesome teacher Wiley Brown, the marketing teacher at Lee Summit North, is the last picture there. And those items you can purchase online and at the school stores at each of the buildings. Um, our program really does offer comprehensive, cutting-edge, rigorous, relevant courses. We study what is in high demand every single year and make sure that our pathways follow what trends are telling us. And if we see that something is not, we immediately start working to figure out how to come up with a program that's in-demand, relevant, and will get our students a high-wage, high-skill, and high-demand career when they leave us today. I hope tonight that I can answer that question that was posed earlier. What is LSR seven doing to help our students with the world of work when they leave us? And everything in this presentation is going to address just that. The pathways that we have available for all of our students are agriculture, business marketing and information technology, skilled technical sciences, engineering, family consumer sciences, occupational family consumer sciences, and health sciences. And within each of those pathways, we have several different clear, career clusters where students can really dive deep in each one of those areas. Also, our CTE programs offer students the opportunity to earn several market value assets, which we are learning through the Diploma Plus initiative what those are, and I'll talk in detail about those as we move through today. Our programs are all aligned currently with our Destination 2021 CSEP Plan, as well as Board Priorities one and two. Um, finance-wise, I do have to make a note, as I was preparing for this presentation this evening and going over my slides, I noticed a mistake in the board doc slides that we see here. So I do want to address that when I'm talking about finances. LSR seven CTE funds cover all of those pathways I talked about over all three of our high schools, as well as Summit Technology Academy. So these funding sources that you see help fund all of those different programs at every one of those buildings, as well as some professional development and resources at all three of our middle schools also. So we actually have total funds of eight hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and eleven cents for this school year. Our Perkins Five federal funding is a hundred and seventy-four thousand four hundred and eighty-four. The CTE Vocational Technical Enhancement Grant for fiscal year twenty-one was three hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred and eighty-nine. And where the mistake was made is with the CTE Basin Performance Funding, which is a state grant. We actually were given one hundred and seventy-five thousand three hundred and eighty-nine. I had looked at DUCY's EPEG system to pull the numbers and accidentally pulled one of the payment requests that I made instead of the full amount, so I do want to make note of that. And then our fifty-fifty career educational grants, we wrote a total of four thousand eight, four thousand eighty-five and eleven cents worth. And our district CTE Project Lead the Way budget is a hundred and thirty-two thousand three hundred and seventy-five, and that budget also helps our Project Lead the Way launch programs in all eighteen elementary schools. The stakeholders that we work with on a regular basis to review all the data and federal accountability measures that we have include a CTE leadership team that consists of myself, Dr. Flack, Toni Bowman-Meek, who is our career curriculum specialist, Sherry Norton is our Business Marketing Information Technology Department Chair, Kathy Nash is our Family Consumer Sciences Department Chair, Jeff Buckner is our Engineering and Industrial Tech Department Chair, and Frank Voak is our Science Curriculum Specialist, and he helps us oversee the health science programming throughout our district. This team is very vital, it, we work together so well. We meet every single month and review everything that has happened, we look at all of our funding sources, we look at all the requests that have come in from teachers, and evaluate where it is that we need to put some of these funds and what would make the greatest impact for the most students and the most teachers, and looking at those high-demand fields and if we're doing right for our students. So this team meets every single month to discuss all of those issues, to make these decisions across our district. Along with that, we have career pathway advisory teams, and the teams that are listed here are the ones that have been meeting this year. These are industry-specific, this came from the CTE leadership team identifying priorities that we have throughout the district based on the voice of our students and our teachers. And that is why we chose the certain areas on the career pathway advisory teams. We have a lot of different federal accountability measures that we utilize whenever we are looking at our programs throughout the district, and one of those is the Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment, or CLNA. That is part of the Perkins Five accountability, so for us to receive those Perkins funds, we have to complete a CNLA every other year. But our district is actually doing one every year to make sure that we're evaluating those programs. So the one that is complete from last year was a twenty nineteen one. We're working on finalizing the twenty-twenty, and then we'll work on next year's, and we'll actually have to submit in twenty-one. And that's the performance of the federal accountability indicators. What we have to look at is participation enrollment. That means how many students have taken a CTE course above a credit? So any student that has had more than one credit, but less than two, because then we have our concentrator status. So those are students that actually took sequential programs, so two courses within a pathway in order to be considered a concentrator. The other core indicators that we look at is post-program retention and placement, and that is where that grad follow-up survey comes in. So we see how our students are doing a year after they leave us. Earned recognized post-secondary credentials, which we call industry-recognized credentials, or IRCs. We look at how we're doing there, and if there's any more that we need to start offering our students based on our business partners in our career advisory teams and what they're saying is relevant. And then non-traditional program concentration, this is how many girls do we have in engineering? Or how many male students are taking the nursing courses? So that non-traditional student in some of those programs. We also look at our labor market needs and make sure that we're aligned, as I mentioned before. We look at scope, size, and quality of the programs that are offered. We do that by conducting what's called a Common Criteria Quality Indicator. Each year, we get each pathway's worth of teachers at every building, and we go through what is called the CCQI to see if the scope and the quality of what we're teaching is really what we need it to be. And then we progress towards implementing programs and programs of study, recruitment, retention, and training of facility and staff, and then also progress towards improving equity and access. So what we found from our previous CLNA process is that we need So what we found from our previous CLNA process is that we need to work towards the following goals. Goal one was to create more opportunities for students to explore career pathways and experience those work-based learning opportunities. We were doing that by establishing additional career and technical student organizations. When we completed the CLNA, we found that we were missing a couple program areas as far as career and student organizations go. We didn't have one for skilled sci, skilled technical sciences, and we also didn't have one at each of the high schools for health sciences. So we implemented new CTSOs at each one of those buildings to make sure that we are doing what we need to do for all of those students. We also have a goal of increasing our industry-recognized credential attainment, increasing our internships, increasing enrollment in all of our CTE courses, and awarding CTE certificates, which I'll talk in detail about in a future slide. Goal two is revamping our Career Pathway Advisory Teams, and we did that this year by doing industry-specific teams and really looking at the priorities and the data on what those teams needed to be. And goal three of improving quality, equity, and access to CTE programs. We're going to do that by providing more opportunities to all CTE educators to go for quality professional development in their area, using a new database program we have called Transio to really track the student engagement data and be able to identify gaps in real time. That would give us time to provide interventions where needed. Maintain industry-standard equipment. We are in the process right now of buying new stove tops and ovens in each one of our culinary classrooms because we need new equipment to stay up to date with industry standards. And then allocate funds to improve access to special populations and evaluate current career curriculum and focused learning to identify the needs for any change in growth we may want to implement. So one of the goal results was that measurement of how kids are doing once they leave us. So in November, after they graduate is when we start the survey, we ask our graduates to take the follow-up survey and let us know what they're doing. Positive placement according to the Perkins Federal Accountability is if a student has went to a two- or four-year college or university, a technical school, went into the military, went straight into the workforce. I believe that's all of them. So that's considered positive placement. That other category that you'll see in these graphs means we either did not get a hold of them and we do not know what they're doing, or we did get a hold of them and they're not in any of those other categories. So what the graduate follow-up data from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty is showing us is a decrease in the amount of students attending two- and four-year schools post-high school graduation, as well as an increase in students going straight into the workforce. The National Student Clearinghouse Research Center also sees that trend. They found that from twenty twelve to now, student enrollment in U.S. colleges is down eleven percent. This is why it's vital for us to continue on with the work that we're doing with the Diploma Plus program and all of our strong CTE programs. You'll notice that in twenty seventeen, we had four-year college, sixty point six percent of our kids were going there right after they graduated. Twenty eighteen, we had fifty-six point nine. And also notice, two-year college, we have decreased a little bit, but we've remained pretty consistent with the numbers of kids that are going to two-year schools. Workforce has gone up since twenty seventeen, so we were at thirteen point five, twenty eighteen, fourteen point eight. In twenty nineteen, our four-year college was down to fifty-three point three percent. Our workforce dropped that year too, and the other category went up, which is not the trend we want to see. And so we, that was also the year we really dove into the CLNA process and started bringing the right stakeholders to the table and really diving in and looking at our programs and what we need to improve on and what we're doing well, and providing some intervention. So we're looking at this data and we're really making some actions to improve those things because we do not want our students to fall into that other category. In twenty twenty, we were all the way down to forty-four point eight, attending a four-year college. I'm sure the pandemic had something to do with the increase in the workforce numbers because we increased drastically to twenty point two percent of workforce, but we were able to make some strides on the other category by going down four percent. So that is definitely a positive number. We provide students several work-based learning experiences throughout the district. Some of those are listed here, but most of these are internships. So through the Kaufman Real World Learning Grant and the Diploma Plus Initiative, these are all considered market value assets that our students will receive if they complete any of the programs that are listed here. Also, the industry-recognized credentials would also be considered a market value asset coming out of career and technical education. We really looked at the list of the industry-recognized credentials that we were giving. We took the information given from Kaufman, and we analyzed that because they really went out and vetted our region and business and industry, asking what are true industry-recognized credentials? And we took that list and compared it to the list that DUCY has, and then we also brought that list to our Career Pathway Advisory Team members and our business partners, asking them, what do you recommend we test our students for? And what we found is several that we used to test really are not valid. We don't want to do something just because. We want to do something because it means something to the kids and that they will get something out of it. So we went and we looked at that list, and we have decided that now we are going to test the following capstone courses for valid industry-recognized credentials that our business partners are saying will help them have a leg up against their peers whenever they go out into the workforce. And those are our Marketing, Business, Finance, and Fintech, Teacher Education Academy, Allied Health, Professional Nursing, Machine Tool Tech, Business Admin and IB Business, Computer Applications Two, Culinary Arts Two, Networking, Cybersecurity, and Advanced Interior Design. And in addition to those programs, all of our engineering programs also have an end-of-course exam that's tied to Project Lead the Way, and that will give students the opportunity, if they score a certain score on those EOCs, or if they got a certain grade in the test, that they can go to different colleges and turn that in, and they will get credit for free in some cases, or for a much reduced rate in other cases. I had mentioned that we had Career Pathway Advisory Meetings, and we were restructured this fall to be industry-specific. The picture that you see here is a subgroup from the Construction Trades Career Pathway Advisory Team that met, and this group of partners really talked about the pathway and skilled technical sciences that we have, and what we are currently doing, and how we can up our game a little bit when it comes to construction trades. They have been amazing. They want to offer internships, apprenticeships, client-connected projects, job shadows. They really are knocking down my door to do these opportunities with kids. So the business partner engagement this year on the, with the Kaufman Grant and the Diploma Plus has been amazing, and it is so awesome, and we are really starting to roll and get some of these experiences set up for kids. One of the accountability measures for Perkins is we have several core indicators, and what they show us is how many of our participants and concentrators, how they're doing academically, how they placed post-graduation, how they're doing academically. And then we also have some accountability measures on non-traditional students. So the ones where we met all federal accountability measures, I have here in these charts how we did compared to the state, but for the number of concentrators, again, that is a student who's taken two sequential credits in a pathway. The first one is that four-year graduation rate. We had seven hundred and thirty concentrators in twenty twenty, seven hundred and twenty-eight of them graduated. So that is a ninety-nine point seven-three you'll see in the very, or the state-adjusted performance level. That's the benchmark that we're trying to hit. So we were quite a ways above that and above state numbers. Core indicator number two is how are our concentrator, how are CTE concentrators doing academically in some of their core classes? So the Reading Language Arts EOC, that is, I believe, English Two, and we had seven hundred and nineteen concentrators take that exam, and the level of performance was seventy-three point seven-one, and we were quite a ways above the state and federal, or state benchmark as well. Another area of academic performance is in math, and that's the Algebra EOC, and we had three hundred and forty-nine concentrators take that, two hundred and nineteen scored, and I say five hundred and thirty, they scored in the top two levels, which means advanced or proficient. So for the ELA, that was five hundred and thirty. For math, it was two hundred and nineteen, scoring in the top two levels. And for science, which is the Biology EOC, our concentrators, there were six hundred and eighty-eight that took that test, and five hundred and eighty-four of them scored in the top two levels of advanced or proficient. This one, we were way above the state benchmark of thirty-nine percent at eighty-four point eight-eight percent. That is awesome. And then the post-placement rate, that is who was placed positively in the graduate follow-up survey, so the things I was talking about, like four-year school, two-year school, so on. We had five hundred and sixteen graduates of our concentrators, and four hundred and eighty-eight of them were positively placed. These graphs on the next two slides show what can be found in the DUCY MCDS portal. Whenever we report all this data in June core data, it can be found out on the DUCY portal, and this one shows that we in the orange are above the state in our graduation rate of CTE concentrators. And this one shows the positive placement, so how we are doing compared to the state in positively placing our CTE concentrators once they graduate, or all of our students once they graduate, not just concentrators. And then another thing that we said we needed to do in the goals was add the CTSOs for every single pathway. So this year, we were able to add HOSA, which is Future Health Professionals. That goes along with the Health Science Pathway, as well as the Technical Student Organization, TSA, which goes along with the Engineering and Skilled Tech Pathway at all three of our high schools. We already have Future Business Leaders of America, which goes with our Business and IT Pathway, and Marketing, our DECA program, which goes with our Marketing Pathway, as well as FCCLA, which is with Family Consumer Sciences. And at STA, we have one for every pathway there as well, and that is Skills USA for the Engineering and Skilled Tech Pathway, HOSA for Health Sciences, and Educators Rising for our Teacher Education Academy. Now, strengths and celebrations, as the need for career and technical education continues to rise, there is much to celebrate in all of our programs across the district. Whenever we were pulling market value asset and CTE data for the Kaufman Real World Learning Grant, we found that each of the three high schools really has a specialty in those areas. So every high school showed a strength in one of the work-based learning opportunity areas over another. Lee Summit High School had the highest percentage of internships. Lee Summit North had the highest percentage of graduates earning nine or more college credit hours. Lee Summit West had the highest percentage of graduates earning industry-recognized credentials, and the data showed us that STA actually had ninety-two percent of their graduates in twenty nineteen earn work-based learning opportunities or market value assets, and they are well on their way this year to having a hundred percent of their students earning those market value assets. Even through the pandemic, our CTSO kiddos have gotten to perform and compete in their varying virtual competitions. Last year, our HOSA chapter, this was before we had HOSA at every building, so the HOSA chapter at STA, which included students from every single building, received top five honors in Certificate of Merit, which means they raised over five hundred dollars for National Pediatric Cancer Foundation, Pharmacy Science and Medical Assisting. This year, they have thirty-one members at STA, and they are going to compete virtually this year with nineteen students participating, and that is just at STA. We also are starting to participate at all three of the high schools as well, and we have had kids compete in those brand-new programs this year. Our Future Business Leaders of America group just got done competing at the district competition. We had kids placed in the top three in all of these twenty-eight events. We have implemented the system Transio, which I have referred to earlier. That's really going to help us track our Diploma Plus market value assets, as well as all of the CTE data. The thing that I love so much about Transio is we get that data in real time, so it talks with our, it talks with Power School and Naviance every single day and pulls real-time information from those systems to where we can identify where we need to have interventions when necessary. Business partner engagement has been amazing. As I mentioned, I have people knocking down my doors for Opportunities for Kids, which is great. The CTE certificate, this is the first year that students will be able to graduate with a CTE certificate. So in twenty sixteen, this was passed, and this will be the first graduating class. Kids that earn this certificate have met all the requirements of a high school diploma. They have qualified as a CTE concentrator, but even more than that because they actually have to have three sequential credits in a pathway, not just two. They maintain a minimum grade point average of three point oh out of four on the CTE area of concentration that they are studying. They have to have passed a technical skills assessment or an industry-recognized credential. They have to complete a minimum of fifty hours of work-based learning experiences, maintain at least a ninety-five percent attendance record for all of grades nine through twelve, and demonstrate attainment of soft skills, and they can do that by actively participating in any of our CTSOs throughout the district, or scoring at a proficient level on a district-developed or adopted soft skills assessment. Or they can have three or more letters of recommendations from three business or industry employers that show us that they have mastered those soft skills, working towards the certificate. And then they also have to have a score at or above the state standard on any department-approved college and career readiness test, like the ACT, the SAT, work keys, and the ASVAB. So a student that is actually earning the certificate has really done a lot of work and worked really hard to earn the CTE certificate. So it will be exciting when we pull that data and see how many of our twenty-twenty-one graduates have earned that CTE certificate. We are also working really hard to get the word out on this certificate with our business partners so they know what it means. I have to mention our amazing CTE teachers. Teaching a hands-on, project-based learning class virtually is not easy, but they have done an amazing job, and just the engagement that our kids are still having in our CTSOs that shows that our teachers are really doing an amazing job. We're really excited about the Aerospace Academy coming at Summit Tech. We just got our approval from the state that it will be a CTE-certified course, so now we will have access to all of the CTE funding for that course, and we're looking forward with our partner, or looking forward to our business partnerships and our post-secondary partnerships in that program as well. We are excited that work has begun within our Teacher Education Academy to evolve into a possible Grow Your Own program. We were able to take the data from the CLNA and identify the subgroups that we were lacking. So we found that we really haven't done enough work to reach our special populations and get those kids in our CTE classes. And so what we did this year is we utilized Perkins funding to hire a Special Education District Liaison that will work as a career navigator for the district. So that is one step that we are making to touch on where we need to So that is one step that we are making to touch on where we need to improve with special populations. So we are excited to have him and get started with all of the great internship works that our special populations groups are already doing. Um, as mentioned, areas for improvement would be special populations um, and identifying which groups of students are not engaged in our career and technical education or there, who are not gaining access. We are really hoping to utilize the Transio program to identify those students and make changes so that those students have all of the opportunities that every student should have in our district. Um, I am confident that with the Transio system, I really think we will be able to start pulling data in May. So we are working with the career navigators to really put all of that information into Transio and kind of put some back information in of students that have already obtained market value assets. And so we'll be able to pull some of those reports. And then, um, let's see. The CTE leadership team would like to expand the marketing of our CTE programs. We found that we do an amazing job getting the word out of what Summit Technology Academy is doing. But we have amazing CTE programs at every single one of our buildings. And we are working really hard to make sure that we get that message out as well. Um, the things we will look, work on for upcoming evaluations is just providing that access and opportunity for all students. Um, supporting increased academic and social emotional gro- groups for all students, as well as aligning with board priorities one and two and the instructional MTSS framework. Uh, action steps, we really have to follow the federal guidelines. So many of those goals remain the same as we work towards increasing enrollment and decreasing equity gaps. And then the CTE leadership team will analyze the twenty-twenty graduate follow-up as well as that common criteria quality indicator that our teachers fill out and other data related to college and career readiness to develop our twenty-one, twenty-two plan. And what I really want to mention is, like I have before, with the diploma plus initiative, CTE is truly embedded in every single element of that program. Career and technical education provides important pathways to success for all students and offers each student opportunities to personalize their education based on career interests and unique learning needs. So thank you, and I'd be willing to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Um, we do have a couple. So, uh, Board Member Doan.
All right, you almost touched on it in the very end, but in great presentation, Shannon. Um, so you will know at the end of the school year, how many kids qualified for the CTE? You don't.
Yes, I, I will not know that, like, the actual numbers until after they've finished their high school diploma. And, um, I'm able to pull all that data from their end-of-course exams, any finals, their grades. That's when seniors leave early, I have a lot of work to do to pull that information. But we are identifying kids that are, we think are on track and making sure that if they're missing that IRC or if they're missing the letter of recommendation, that we go talk to them and make sure that they know if they want the CTE certificate.
So, because this is, this is your first year, this is the kids that start, okay? And so then you'll be able to i- identify the subgroups?
Yes.
Like Grace and?
Yes.
And, okay. I think that is all I wanted, thank you.
Board Member Allen?
Yeah, hey, thank you, President Murdock, and, and thank you very much, Ms. Booth. Just, uh, two, three things. I was trying to pull together the number of students that are engaged in this. Is it roughly four thousand? Is that a high number alone, is that?
Oh, that's, that's pretty close.
Okay, just on some of the charts that you had had. So there, that, that's roughly twenty percent of our student population, is that right? I mean, that's a, that's a good number, that's a, to me, for the first year.
It's a great number, but that is our participation number. So that is the number, so actually we have a little bit more than that.
Okay.
Because we have students that are taking, uh, half a credit. And what we want to do is make sure that if they took a half a credit, why did they stop coming to us? Let's identify why and then get even more as concentrators.
Sure, okay. And then, um, two other things, well, three, I guess. You said the partnership with businesses is very good and positive in the engagement area. Um, that'll build just over time. Are we actively pursuing that larger number of partnership? I guess, and then my next question sort of lays into that, and believe it or not, I have one more after that. Um, are we utilizing some of the relationships built over the years? I mean, twenty-plus years with Partner in Ed, Lee Summit Educational Foundation. I mean, those run now, what, two decades plus, multiple generations? Is that layered into this somehow, some way?
Absolutely. Tina Chase from the Lee Summit Educational Foundation, or no, I'm, I'm sorry. Tina Chase from the LSE.
That's my next question, so you jumped ahead of me. But I'm talking about inside the district, right? So Partner in Ed and then, and the foundation. I realize the foundation is a little bit different, because there's always been that Chinese wall. However, those bloodlines run deep. And when we talk about partnerships and collaboration, we talked about great beginnings. In essence, the foundation was huge in that effort, along with some community partners. So I'm curious if we cultivate some of that or don't, I don't know.
Absolutely. Laura Maxwell and I have worked together throughout this entire year as the diploma plus initiative has started to come to life. Um, we, with that Transio program, we are trying to implement a program where all of our business partners kind of have a one-stop shop. But what we, um, need to do, and a lot of this is being proposed through the non-allocated process. And once we figure out what direction we are moving forward in that process, we can identify businesses once they're in that system, whether they are a mentor or a building partner or they want to do these experiences that we need for diploma plus initiatives. So Laura and I have been working together on that. We are still waiting to see what the direction is going to be for, um, how we're going to take those different initiatives, but still make it a one-stop shop for our business partners. So they have one thing to do to connect to us and then we provide them with the right person to move forward. Because we absolutely want the partnerships that we've had for so long to do what they're still doing and mentoring and being with our, our kids. But we also want to grow and expand to our new business partners for these experiences.
Shannon, can you add how many businesses there are in your advisories?
In our advisories, well, in the construction trade, we had over thirty-two. Um, in health sciences, we've had about ten. Um, computer science, we have about eight. Uh, I'm trying to think what else we had on the list.
It's, it's well over a hundred.
That's great.
Correct, when you put them all together.
Yes.
Yes. And, and they've, they've actually changed some of our programs. So, for example, the health, you're talking about the health field. You know, one of the things they talked about is the 3D modeling. So now all of a sudden we got partnerships between different CTE pathways where kids in one pathway are teaching 3D modeling to kids in the health, uh, pathway.
And then expand on your last con, or a comment there you talked about, it's the, yeah, I'm using acronyms, right? But, uh, the, um, LSE DC. It's mentioned quickly at the beginning of the, the, the report, but I know it's pretty vertical. I mean, it's a pretty deep relationship, isn't it?
So Tina Chase and I have been going around and presenting to chamber events, to rotary events, to, um, luncheons, trying to get any local and regional business partners to be aware of career and technical education and the diploma plus initiative as we roll forward. And just today, because of some of that outreach that we've been doing, I was contacted yesterday and today by four new business partners wanting to establish those experiences. And we're not done yet. We have several engagements on the calendar for the rest of the spring, where we're going to go together and really start pushing these things out. Another thing we're working on for April, because our construction trades really told us we need to identify, um, to our students, the different careers that are available in the construction trades. And so Tina and I are working with local business partners to provide a virtual career panel that we have figured out how we can have our construction trades courses at every single building, watching this virtual career panel at the same time, so that all of those kids get access to this panel. So we are working on that and we should be ready to roll that out in April.
Board Member Campbell?
Thank you, and great presentation. And I really appreciated all the information that you provided around the questions as well. Because being new to, um, a lot of this information, I did have a lot of questions. You know, questions like, how does this tie to real-world learning? Questions about for all of our students. You know, we know we have students that are interested in college. We know we have students that are not interested in college, and how do we offer opportunities for all of them? So can we talk a little bit about the tie to real-world learning and how this is offered to all of our students?
Absolutely. So that is part of the reason why our partnerships look a little bit different than they have, um, previously. And that is because we are really trying to partner with business and industry to provide the different market value assets, so every single one of our kids have an opportunity with these real-world learning experiences. So those being our college credit, nine or more hours of college credit. We are doing very well in that category. Um, where we need to continue to grow and expand is in the area of client-connected projects, entrepreneurial experiences, and in our internships. We hope that we can start offering a youth apprenticeship. We hope that we might have one-off internships and not just the experiences that are listed under career and technical education. So if a company calls us and says, you know, I only have one position, and we're going to say, okay, well, what do you need for that one position? What does it look like? What student are you looking for? And then we, through that Transio system, can actually post it like a job board for kids. And we could make that visible. So then the students can actually search for different internship opportunities, even though they may not be offered through a program or a course, so that we can touch on all students. With the special education district liaison that we've hired, he is now looking at our community-based instruction and some of the, um, work programs that we have with our special education students. And we are starting to put that information into Transio and pilot some internships there as well. So that's another category, what opens doors for so many students. Um, the industry-recognized credentials. If a student ever comes and says, I think I want to take this test, we would look into it and see what we can do. Um, so in all areas of market value assets, we're not only trying to put them in career and technical education, but we're also trying to put them in some of our core classes. It's just whatever the experience is that's coming our way from our business partners, finding the best fit for the most students or for the right student is what we're trying to accomplish here. And it's going to open up so many doors for so many kids to have that additional skill when they leave us.
That's great, thank you. And can you remind me the definition of market value asset?
It's really a, a skill set that they have in addition to their diploma when they're leaving us. So the ones that we are doing are work experiences, and that would include your client-connected projects and your internships or apprenticeships. Um, industry-recognized credentials, so those tests that give them a leg up. Entrepreneurial experiences, that is where a student comes up with a problem or a solution to a problem. And they kind of pitch it Shark Tank-style, but they also have to come up with a business plan and think through the entire process. And then, um, client-connected projects, which, um, that is where we work with clients. Like, for example, I had a construction company reach out today. And originally, they were just talking about job shadows and opportunities for our kids to visit, which is awesome, and we want to do those things. But when I started talking, would there be any opportunity for a client-connected project here? What we found is she was so excited, because she thought it all had to be about construction, but there's so many other jobs within that construction field. And she said, we actually have a problem with our communication. We are finding that our workers out on the field don't check their company email and they don't have industry, or they don't have company phones, so we can't text them. How do we get the message across? And I said, that would be a great client-connected project for our students. So we are trying now, bringing that to our new career navigators at each building and saying, where do we think this fits? And beginning to connect those courses to those client-connected projects. And then lastly, college credit. Right now, we are asking all of the colleges that offer dual credit to us to send us a spreadsheet of kids that have earned college credit each semester. So we just got that information for the fall, and we'll put that into our system. And then we'll get another one at the end of the year for the second semester, put that in the system and really start tracking our dual credit.
Great, great, thank you. And I think just my last question is, how are students, well, okay, it's a twofold question. How are students hearing about this and how are parents hearing about this? Because I find sometimes there's that disconnect of students hear about it at school, sometimes there's no conversation with parents and back and forth. So how are we sharing all this information out with our parents and our students?
Well, we are still in a planning year now. And what we've really tried to do this year is set the foundation, make sure we have all the tracking measures in place, make sure we are starting to bring business partners to the table, that these experiences are here. And now our team is really working on, how do we get that message out? So we've designed a professional development, um, that is housed in our schoolage system for our teachers and all of the staff. And they will all have taken that by May. So a hundred percent of our secondary staff, or maybe just high schools. I think we're going to look at middle schools too. But our high school staff will have taken that and have been trained on what this is. We have hired career navigators at each one of the buildings. And I'm actually bringing another one on through our Perkins funding at SRA as well. Um, I talked to Mr. Campbell today about that. Um, and so we're working through them to really get out in front of the, the community too and the buildings and spread the word. We continue to do the amazing things in all of our career and technical student organizations and our CTE pathways and programs that we do. And now we're adding diploma plus to everything that we're saying to all of those groups as well. But our goal from now until really the end of this school year is to come up with that plan and what that's going to look like. And a lot of those things are also part of the non-allocated process. And once we know what that might look like, we will definitely be moving forward and making strides in that area.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much, we appreciate it. We are going to move on to item ten, which is just, uh, which are our written reports. We had three for this particular meeting. So if there are any comments that people would like to make in regards to the reports, we will do that now. Um, it was a close call on who hit the button first, but it was Board Member Fritchie.
You know you can count on me, huh? I'm going to keep this quick, because our meetings run long. Um, ten point zero one, um, our special education report. Thank you, Dr. Mathis. That was a very comprehensive report. Wow. Um, it's been a challenging year, to say the least. And I think your staff has really risen to that challenge in many, many ways. And you pointed, uh, some of those out as in your successes in the report. I won't go into that now for time's sake, but thank you. But one of the one things that I do want to mention was that you said that we continue to maintain a high graduation, graduation rate for our students with IEPs as compared to the state. And I think that's very, um, commendable for our staff that works so hard to help our students. It's also notable that you've identified areas for your department's improvement and that you've developed questions for your future evaluation. So that's all important pieces as you go forward. And so just many thanks to each one of the members of the special education department who work diligently to assist our students day in and day out with their services. And I say that as the grateful daughter of a special education teacher. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Board Member Fritchie. Board Member Doan?
All right, um, ten point zero three. I just wanted to say, it, it seemed like it changed a lot this year. So I was, I, I just wanted to put this thought into your head, because you know how we go through the priorities and we, and we mark out? We can see what's marked and what's changed. And it would have been helpful, I think, for me, and I, I read it late, kind of like right now, so I'm tired. But, um, just the changes, just if we could have highlighted the different changes that it was made. So, I don't know. changes that it was made. So, I don't know. And then, who actually, does every coach and sponsor get this? I look at Dr. Andrews, and I think probably, because, okay. Does every coach and sponsor get that each year, or how does that all work? Yes. Okay. One?
I think that each athletic director in each school has a coaches' meeting with their coaches at the beginning of every year, and they, they go through some of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments related to our written reports? Okay, we are going to move on to Item 11.01. We need a motion from a board member as some of you get to leave, some of us will stay. So if we could get that motion on 11.01, please.
I move to conduct a closed session, including any record or vote, immediately following the regular session on Thursday, February 25th, 2021, at 301 Northeast Tudor Road, Lee Summit, Missouri 64086, for consideration of the following matters in Section 610.021, Revised Statutes of Missouri, Legal Issues 1, Real Estate 2, Personal Issues 3 and 13, and Student Issues 6 and 14.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into closed session. Is there any discussion on this motion? Okay, all those in favor, we do need to do a roll call vote on this one.
Board Member Marshall?
Aye.
Board Member Allen? Board Member Campbell? Vice President Fritchie?
Aye.
Board Member Doan?
Aye.
President Murdock?
Aye.
Dr. Hedrick?
I'm abstaining.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries unanimously with one abstention, and we are in closed session. Thank you, everyone, for tonight. Have a good evening.